Seven oh five, excuse me, we'll open this meeting. Selectmen shampoo and formless, you will not be able to make tonight's meeting. Everybody else is present, and we'll start by transmitting Treasury Warrants thirteen, thirteen A, fourteen, and fourteen A.
Warrant is read by the chairman.
Second.
Motion made, second in all favor. Unanimous. We have no minutes to approve, so we'll go right with our seven o'clock appointment with Judith Pat-- excuse me. Judith Bags, RN, the public health nurse, can you give us an update relative to seasonal flu clinics here Wilmington? Good evening.
Good evening. Yep. We do have a couple of clinics scheduled so far. The first one will be on Tuesday, October twenty-sixth. That will be a school flu clinic. That will be held at the school, at the middle school. It will be for grades K through twelve, and we'll be working with the school nurses on that. Pre-registration is required on the board of-- on the school website. All the printed information and consent forms are on the website. They will be printed off and brought to the school. If someone does not have Internet access, they can call either me at the Board of Health or Doreen Crowe at the high school and get the registration forms ahead of time. So that will be our first clinic. The first public clinic will be Saturday, November sixth, here at Town Hall, and that will be from ten AM to two PM, and that will be for the general public. And then we will be having a clinic on Tuesday, November ninth, for the seniors at the senior And those are just walk-ins, no pre-registration or appointments are required. And there's just one flu shot this year. Last year, you may recall, we had the seasonal flu plus, we had the H1N1. This year, there'll just be one flu shot, which will contain an H1N1 component.
Very good. You had mentioned last year that that was gonna happen.
Right.
They're gonna combine the-- when's the first public one?
I'm sorry?
When's the first public one?
When is the first public one? Saturday, November sixth.
Okay.
Ten AM to two PM here at Town Hall.
You might be interested in that, the way I'm feeling right now. Questions or comments from the board?
Just one. You had mentioned pre-registration required for the K through twelve at the middle school.
Right.
And no pre-registration required for the senior center. How about the one in the middle for the general public?
Nope, just walk in. No pre-registration. Having done the schools for the first time last year, K through twelve, we tried it without appointments, and we ended up having long lines and a little bit of restlessness with the kids. So we tried a subsequent clinic with appointments, pre-appointments, and it worked very well. Literally, no lines, no waiting. So working with the school again this year, we decided to do it by appointment as well. It's just less hassle and less confusion, and it's more efficient.
Judy, we'll take children at the public clinic as well if they are unable to make the school clinic, the school-based clinic.
Absolutely, yep. There will be some kids that will need a second shot. If they were not previously vaccinated, they will need a second shot in four weeks. Then I will do that privately in the office by appointment also. I do want to add, in addition to these scheduled clinics that we have so far, I am now vaccinating in the office by appointment pregnant women. So anyone who's pregnant, who wants to be vaccinated, as they should be, can give me a call at the office, and I'll schedule a private appointment for them.
Could you tell us who should not be-- who should not get the flu vaccine from any allergies or anything like that?
Well, we have two kinds of vaccine this year. We have a flu mist, which is the nasal spray, and we also have the conventional injectable vaccine that most people are familiar with. Only certain ages can get the flu mist, the nasal spray, ages two through forty-nine. So if you're not in that category, you can't get that particular preparation. Also, it's a live virus, so if you have any kind of-- excuse me, any kind of underlying chronic illness, you can't receive flu mist. Other than that, the injectable, anyone can receive unless they've had a severe allergic reaction to it in the past, or certain conditions that we screen for. Everyone is individually screened. So unless they have an egg allergy or another type of allergy and have had a severe reaction in the past, anyone can have injectable vaccine.
I know last year, the H1N1 was coming in in different units, and so many units this year, we're pretty confident that we have enough to--
Yeah, the word is that there's ample supply. Last year was a little difficult. It was only allotted in small increments, and it took us months to get a full allocation. This year, I have at least half of it so far, and we're-- we've been assured that we'll have plenty for the first flu clinic on November sixth. So there doesn't seem to be a supply issue this year.
Very good.
And also, there's no flu out there yet. If anyone's concerned that we're, you know, a little bit late with clinics, there's no flu, documented flu, in the state of Massachusetts yet, so people don't have to feel, you know, urgent about it. We'll have plenty of vaccine, and we should be able to meet the needs of the community.
Very good. Any questions, comments from the board? Any questions or comments from the audience? Thank you for your time tonight, Judy. Right our time for our seven-ten appointment. With Carol Hamilton, Director of Planning and Conservation, and Christine Lovello, Federated Companies, status of ten Burlington Avenue Property Comprehensive Permit. Good evening.
Good evening.
Hello. My name is Christine. I'm from Federated Companies. We're a Miami-based company. However, the owner's originally from Haverhill, Mass., and ended up setting up the development portion of the company in Miami, and the construction portion is here in Massachusetts. I do a little bit of both the development side and the construction side, so that's why I'm here tonight. Basically, we're a rapidly growing company. We have two thousand and ten construction starts this year, one in Massachusetts-- or in Manchester, New Hampshire, which will be a total of two hundred and six units. We have six flat units, six buildings of flat units, which comprise one hundred and ninety-eight units and eleven single families. And we also have another two thousand and ten start in Wakefield, Mass., which will be a hundred and ninety-- or a hundred and twenty-eight units, which will be one hundred and fourteen flat units and fourteen townhome units. And one of the products we are currently looking at now is in Wilmington. And it's one that you folks had already permitted and voted in, and right now, it's been extended, the permits have been extended till April twenty-eighth of two thousand and eleven. It's located at ten Burlington Avenue, near the T Station, and it's eleven point five four acres. Currently, there's a building on the site. It's permitted to have that demoed. And to construct two other buildings, Building One, which will be a fifty-nine unit building, and Building Two, which will be a forty-nine unit building. And this plan isn't up-to-date, I've been informed, but there's a parking garage, a parking structure here, enclosed parking structure here. And it'll comprise one hundred and eight units total. It will be under forty B, and basically, the intent is to build it exactly as it's been permitted. However, we will be requesting from the Board of Appeals to go from a for-sale project to a for-rent project. So that's our status. Anything to add, Carol?
No, I think you've covered it well. If there are questions, be glad to help.
The board will recall that they had endorsed the for-rent project before.
Correct.
When development brought it in from a owner occupied to a rental. And one of the advantages certainly is you would get credit under forty B for the entire property as a rental. So we wanted to bring in Federated Companies for two reasons. Number one, because it is a new owner with a PNS on the property, and because we've had so many calls from different folks asking about the status of what clearly is an eyesore at this point down at that location, and it appears now that there is some activity that will engender the construction that has already been permitted by the town, and it's the same type of construction.
Very good.
I'd just like to ask the question with the vote in three weeks, as far as the forty B to appeal it, does that supersede-- in other words, when would that go into effect if that becomes law?
We would have to get a building permit by December thirty-first, two thousand and ten, in order to keep the forty B status.
And other than the Board of Appeals, it doesn't have to go through any other boards?
No.
Conservation's all set in--
Correct.
--Planning Board?
Thank you.
Any questions or comments?
A quick question, Carol. When Tamboni was looking at it, it's the same amount of units. Is it a little less, more, or more?
No, it's exactly the same. The comprehensive permit was issued to Mr. Tamboni. Federated is agreeing to abide by the existing comprehensive permit. If they go-- what the only change would be to go to the Board of Appeals, that would require opening the hearing for the change, which would be from ownership units to rental units. That would be the only portion of the comprehensive permit that would be changed, and the only portion that would be opened at the public hearing.
So the last time the Board of Selectmen, the last time we took any kind of a vote on this, was to endorse that change, but then it never made it to Board of Appeals because of the contract between the then would-be purchaser and the owner?
Didn't go forward, right.
Any other questions or comments from the board? Questions or comments from the audience? Representative Masoli?
Would the mitigation still be in place?
Yes, it's all in place. Those were conditions of the comprehensive permit.
Do you want to line the whole?
Yes.
At this point right now, we're bargaining about forty B status at the time. Where are we about at forty B?
Ten percent.
So we're at ten percent, counting in this project?
No, not counting--
Or we're gonna be over?
Over. It would be over. When this receives a building permit, those units will count toward any change in our number once the new census is released.
Exactly. The other question I have, maybe the developer can answer this one. How many of those units are going to be affordable, and how are they going to be affordable? Through Section Eight, or are they gonna be through some kind of affordable lottery for rental?
I believe it's through M.A.S. Housing. It's already been determined the number of units, and they have to be selected throughout the buildings.
Okay.
You know, it can't be just the lower level or anything like that.
Okay, and all the traffic studies and all that are staying pretty much, there's been no change in traffic studies in that four corner area. All right, thank you.
Now, one of the things you might remember, too, is that this project gives us an easement on the property side of Burlington Avenue from sixty-two to the end of the pro-- or to the, I guess, to the driveway, almost to the driveway, for the town to expand sixty-two if that's ever becomes necessary. So there'll be a no-build area along sixty-two there that will actually be transferred as an easement to the town for the purposes of widening, if that ever is necessary. So I think that also helped with some of the traffic, potential traffic issues in that area over time.
Go ahead.
I just have one question, and it's starting to come back to me. As far as, I remember this project a few times, the pedestrian crossing, as far as getting to the railroad, was there gonna be like a stairway going up over Burlington Ave., or is it just gonna be a crosswalk at the light?
No, what it's proposed to do is to come down the hill and go under Route sixty-two, is the proposal.
So it's gonna be underneath, like, the bridge?
That's correct.
And they're gonna cross the track that way?
Well, they won't cross the track. They'll continue on that side.
Okay.
They won't have to cross the track.
Oh, okay, I-- that's right. Going this way, it's gonna be before, yeah.
Right.
Okay, yeah, I remember there was controversy over that, and that's why-- so basically, everything that was permitted under those terms are basically permitted totally the same. Everything stays current, except for the rental, basically, is the only change.
That would be the only proposed change.
And I believe we had that in front of us the last time, correct?
You did. One of-- I've had several folks come and talk about this project, and one of the companies that was most interested in it probably more than a year ago now was interested in doing a rental project there. So that-- they did come and talk with us. We were kind of making preparation for them to go to the Board of Appeals, as we are now, but it never turned out that they went forward. They decided to abandon the project before it got to that stage. So the public hearing was never opened. It never formally changed from ownership to rental.
Very good. Any other questions or comments from the board?
Are you on the agenda for the Board of Appeals coming up? I assume that you are.
They're going November.
All right, because you're looking for building permit prior to December thirty-first for this actually to take place.
Right.
All right, so, all right, good, thank you.
Any other questions or comments from the audience?
If everything went your way, what is your construction timetable?
I haven't put together a schedule yet, but generally, we build projects. The Lawrence project was an eighty-unit project with additional townhomes, and we did that in nine months, so we construct rapidly. New Hampshire, with the six buildings, that'll be one hundred and ninety-eight units, will go up in a month, not a month, in a year. So it's a twelve-month.
When do you put the shovel in the ground there?
When we put the shovel in the ground, I would estimate with two buildings, you're probably looking at about ten months for construction.
I mean, when are you gonna start?
I don't have any answer.
Not there yet.
All right, sorry.
Thank you both for coming down today.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Yeah, I gotta say something before though. You know, I can't say anything good about this company, but they would not have left that place in such disgrace, and the Board of Selectmen should have gotten after anybody who had any interest in there to clean it up so that it's not such an eyesore. And not just for the residents of Wilmington, because Route sixty-two was traveled by people who go to North Reading, Andover, North Andover. They drive through the center of our town, and they say, "What the heck is going on here in this community?"
Well, I'd just like to respond on behalf of the town. I mean, first of all, the Board of Selectmen and the town in general has worked cooperatively with every interested party who talked about developing that property that would do exactly what you're talking about. Unfortunately, as you know, one of the permits that was issued was appealed, which delayed that project, and ultimately, it never went forward. That was notwithstanding the support of this board, the support of the neighborhood, and the support of every board in Wilmington.
That's not what I'm talking about. I'm talking about actually putting pressure on anybody to clean up their property so that we don't have to be ashamed of our town.
Well--
And I think the town fathers would have that power.
Well--
I would, come on. I'd be down there with myself.
That property was foreclosed on, and like--
Somebody owns it. Somebody's responsible for it. It's not me, and it's not you. Somebody is.
And--
We wouldn't let our yards go like that, would we? Would we?
Okay, I guess I'm not gonna get to--
Some would. Some would, okay.
Carol, would you like to--
Yeah, I'd just like to comment on that, that we're in a-- this is private property, whether the bank owns it, or whether Mr. Newhouse owns it, or I own it. And really, the town doesn't have much it can do to go forward and make me clean up my yard if I choose not to, and that's the case in-- on this property, too. It's private property. They did not have an owner-developer going forward. It currently is under purchase-and-sales agreement. It isn't owned by this company yet. They're waiting to get their permits in hand, and then I'm sure they'll go in and demo the building. That's the first thing we're gonna ask them to do as well.
I'd just like to answer. I never did get a chance to answer. You know, there are certain things that the town maybe could do, which would have increased the pressure to develop that property, but if we had done that, it would have been developed in the wrong way. Right now, this is the kind of, you know, dense housing project that the town has talked about doing in that area since, literally, since the early nineteen nineties, when they re-zoned the town center, long before I was ever involved in town government. You know, I suppose we could have put so much pressure on the bank to do something to their property that we didn't have the legal authority to do, that they turned around and sold it just for some industrial use, for which it's zoned, and for which they could have built out a terribly burdensome project for the neighborhood. So, you know, there's-- in hindsight, I think the town has done everything the way it should be done. We've done everything we can to promote a responsible redevelopment of that property, and to do so in a way that's not only consistent with the town's big-picture plan that's been in place since the early nineties, but has done it in a way that's not intrusive on the neighborhood. So I consider this to be a success for the town of Wilmington, and frankly, I'm really pleased that, in this environment, there is a company out there who has the wherewithal to come in and to take this next step. Now, you know, until it's done, I guess, you know, you can't count on it. You know, you just hope that it pans out from an economic standpoint, but this is certainly the best that we could have hoped for in this environment, I believe.
I don't wanna run out of memory, Lou. I served on that board for twelve years, and we had problems like that. We did. That's exactly what we did. We brought pressure there on the owners, and I'm not talking about homeowners, a little gas station or something. I'm talking about something that was a real eyesore, and it worked. But I think you agree to that. You said that that could be done.
Well, what I would say is that regardless of whether or not you accept the fact that the town only has so much, so much authority under the law to actually do something about a property like that, that even if we tried to exceed our authority, it probably would backfire, because you've got a going concern that is foreclosed on that property, that would like nothing better than to get the most amount of money they can and to move on. And if that means building some industrial use in the middle of Wilmington Center, that's very well what could have happened. So, you know, I stand by what I said earlier, that the town, in my mind, has made all of my right moves in terms of the administration, the Board of Selectmen, the Board of Appeals, relative to this particular site, so that in the end, we have a development that works well for the town and isn't a burden to the neighborhood.
I'm gonna belabor it, but that's debatable.
Real quick, Mr. Chairman, just to make the point, the center is being cleaned up as it is right now. Joe Langone's got the corner, the other corner of sixty-two, beautifying the center, which we lost virtually the whole center to the train station. With that project going in, the only two concerns that most residents of sixty-two have, and I've heard it, is the traffic is the biggest concern, because that traffic is that, any which way you go, thirty-eight come to the center, with the five legs from the leg going down sixty-two either which way in the morning. It is a mess. I mean, it took me forever to pull out of Joe Langone's project this afternoon. I mean, there was a lot of concerns, and even Carol made a point about the ten percent where it afforded. I mean, at that point, the town legally has a legal obligation to deny any comprehensive permit. The Board of Appeals tomorrow could say, "Guess what? We're not gonna let it go to rental. You guys came here and said we're gonna sell, and now the economy stinks, and nobody's buying." I mean, the project's in the center itself. Behind Bank of America, it's probably one or two units that sold in the last six months. So I mean, that whole, that whole place is being redeveloped, but the traffic is only gonna get progressively worse, not any better. But what's going on, maybe between this board and the state can come to some kind of compromise to resolve the traffic.
I think this board has worked, even recently, we've worked with the state and our police, and they've done some studies, and they've changed them, like, configuration, timing, and like, so we are well of that, and there has been traffic studies on this project. Also, the forty B, quickly, the new census numbers are gonna be coming out, so that could all change, too. But I appreciate your input. For our seven-thirty, we have Carolyn Harris, Chairman of Historical Commission, and Louis Ross, Deutsch Williams, for the Winifred Richardson Estate on two eighty Woburn Street. Sure, Louis, thank you. Good evening. Hi, Carolyn, how are you?
Good, thanks. Good evening.
Just wanted to clarify, I'm here for the town, not for the trust.
Okay.
I'd like to begin by giving you, I know that you have in your packet information concerning the Winifred Richardson Estate, two eighty Woburn Street. The property was also known at one time as Wheelgate Farm. In the year two thousand, Winifred and close friends of hers attended a Historical Commission presentation at the library, and following that, came up and indicated to me that she had something she wished to give to the town of Wilmington. She called several weeks later, and I said, "Well, Winifred, will it fit in the car?" And she said, "Oh, no." And I said, "Well, I can borrow my husband's truck, and I'll be all with the truck." And she says, "No, you don't understand, dear. I wanna give the town of Wilmington my house and all of my property for the purposes of historic preservation and educational pursuits." The property is five point seven acres of land, includes the house that was built approximately seventeen thirty. We do know that whoever was living there was paying taxes in seventeen fifty-four, so the actual date is probably a little disputable. The other farm buildings included are a nineteenth-century barn, a greenhouse, a Bruder House, a grape arbor, a cold cellar, and a stone wall system. The property had been used for agriculture. Winifred and her family moved there during World War Two. There were three daughters. None of the daughters married. Winifred was the last surviving daughter. It has, the land itself has been described in the application of the inclusion of the National Register of Historic Places as a pastoral setting with several areas of cultivation that represents the history of agricultural activity in Wilmington and in Massachusetts. The property has been included in the inventory of historic and archaeological resources of the Commonwealth, which is maintained by the Massachusetts Historical Commission. The property was listed on the National Register of Historic Places as a significant example of Georgian and Federal period architecture in two thousand and four. The town of Wilmington currently holds a preservation restriction for this property. This was granted to the town and accepted at Town Meeting Warrant Article twenty-eight in two thousand and two. It was approved unanimously. In addition, Winifred named the town as beneficiary to inherit her property outright upon her death. Ms. Richardson passed away on January twentieth, two thousand and ten. It will now be up to the town of Wilmington to decide whether it wants to accept this inheritance. In addition to the property, there has been endowment, has been granted to the town for the care of the property. The amount of the endowment is uncertain. We feel it's, at this time, probably about a hundred and forty-five thousand dollars. The interest from this amount would be accumulative, and obviously, used for the maintenance and upkeep of the property. Winifred Richardson wanted her property preserved for the benefit of future generations. Her fondest hope was that her property be maintained for education and the enjoyment of all Wilmington residents, but especially children. She wished that the property be used for historic preservation, educational program, agricultural programs, and conservation. There were certain things she did not want to happen. She didn't want any of the major buildings demolished. She did not want the property to be subdivided. She did not want the historic features to be destroyed or altered. And the property, she did not want it used for a ball field or other organized spot, or for any kind of motorized or wheeled outdoor activities. And that's simply because she wanted to keep the agricultural element to her property. What she envisioned, and Kathleen Reynolds and I spent considerable time with Winifred from the year two thousand on. She wanted the property used for educational purposes, teaching children how to plant gardens, basic forestry, early farming. There are wonderful paths, there's a forested area, there are open areas, there are, you know, all kinds of fruits and, you know, raspberry and blueberry bushes and so forth. She would, wanted to see Boy Scouts, Cub Scouts, Girl Scouts use it for educational purposes, cross-country skiing, snow shoeing. As I said, there are numerous paths and trails in the property. Gardening, we have a number of apartments within Wilmington, and she was talking about a community garden. Where in many larger cities, they divide up property and perhaps rent it out to grow crops. And, you know, functions, picnics, I mean, the possibilities are endless. We've already researched grants for the property. There are grants which we could qualify. The National Trust for Preservation Grant Fund looks very encouraging, but a basic requirement is that the property be owned by a municipality in order to apply. The commission sees this as a tremendous opportunity. The commission sees this as a tremendous opportunity for the town of Wilmington to add to our open space and recreational areas. Two of the major goals, I think, of the master plan. As I said, there are endless possibilities. It's our hope that the Board of Selectmen will support this acquisition. With this in mind, I wish to invite each member of the Board of Selectmen to tour the Richardson Estate. You can go there anytime and walk around the property, but to access the house or the barn, we would have to set up an appointment. The caretaker for the property lives in North Reading. He's willing to come over and open it. And I think my basic question is, what would be most convenient for you gentlemen to come and to take a look at it would be during the week or on a weekend, et cetera. The trustee is Mr. Bob Eckhart. He lives in Hillsborough, New Hampshire. And I'm sure that Mr. Ross will explain further about some of the legal issues of the trustee. But anybody have any questions?
Do you have any questions?
I know that if you take a look at the map that I provided, you can certainly see in that neighborhood, that is a substantial portion of land that would be open space and used for recreational purposes.
Okay, Mr. Ross, would you like to add to that?
Sure, sure. The basic legal structure is the, Mr. Eckberg is responsible for maintaining the property in accordance with the preservation restriction, which the town does hold, which already requires the property to be maintained within the framework of its historic character and, you know, the open space and agricultural use that it had been used for in the past. Under the trust, Mr. Eckberg has until January 20, which is one year from the date of Ms. Richardson's passing, to find a willing recipient of the property. And if not, then he's authorized to find, I'm sorry. He has until January 20 to see whether or not the town would be a willing recipient of the property. And then after that, he is able to find any willing recipient of the property. Legally, the town can't accept ownership of the whole property until it gets an appropriate town meeting vote anyway, until annual town meeting is the next town meeting that is scheduled in April. So, any acceptance by the town would be contingent upon Mr. Eckberg being willing to wait beyond the January 20 deadlines set forth in the trust. But otherwise, legally, there don't seem to be bars other than the town meeting vote. It's just whether or not the town would be willing to accept ownership, subject to the terms of the preservation restriction, meaning be obligated to keep the property up in its historic fashion and use it consistent with that prior use. And also be responsible for the cost of that. To defray that cost, there would be about $145,000 given to the town. The town could use the interest from that $145,000 annually to help defray the cost of maintenance, but would not be able to touch that $145,000 itself to use toward the upkeep of the property.
So, in terms, Mr. Chairman, if I could, $145,000 principal, what would we be talking for an annual interest? What does the town get on something like that?
Well, I mean, the town is getting, you know, 1% right now, 1% to 2% on most of its investments, because we are very conservative and cautious in our investments. You know, I suppose one could, you know, invest it in such a way that would earn more than that, a longer-term investment. I can't, in this current economy, I don't imagine you're going to get greater than 5%. And I think that's probably one heck of a reach at this point. So, I would say the most, you know, we'd be talking about inuring would be, you know, $5,000 to $7,000 a year. And that would be, I think, the most. I think everybody would agree to that. And if it's lower than that, you know, if it's around 2%, then you're talking about maybe $3,000 or so.
One of the reasons why I asked that, other than just to get perspective as to what the carrying cost might be, is to, just to make the point that when the town did this back in 2002, I think that one of the things we all talked about was, it was nice that we at least were going to get half a loaf, meaning we were able to preserve it in the way that the easement prescribes and, you know, so we're going to be able to control how that property is used going forward. And the other half a loaf, you know, maybe we should have it, maybe we shouldn't. I guess what I'm saying is with the control being half the loaf, that's great. If we can have the other half in a way that makes sense for the town, then I think we ought to do it. But if there's a way to accomplish the same purpose, maintain our control, maintain all of the goals that are set forth in the easement, continue to hold the easement, that might make sense too. And I'm wondering if either the school department or any organization outside of Wilmington, how do we reach those people to see if we, whether the town takes ownership and then has a, you know, a long-term occupant that, you know, can help absorb some of that cost or all that cost? Does the school department have a use for it? Has the Historical Commission already crossed that bridge? And I don't know about it. Is that something that's been talked about or can be talked about?
Well, it does qualify for grants. And one of the first grants that I had mentioned would be a planning grant that would take a look at the property and analyze the best use for the town of that property. We did some preliminary research just recently, and in fact, it was today, and we came up with 10 communities that own farms or agricultural areas similar to the Richardson Estate in Massachusetts. One of them, I believe it was in Haverhill, was as a result of a bequest. It was inherited by the town and it is a small working farm. I think sometimes you have to look at it a little bit outside of the box and think in terms of, you know, it's preserving green space, and it's going to be used by the citizens of Wilmington and used in a variety of capacities throughout the four seasons. I would envision Boy Scouts and Girl Scouts having an encampment there. I would envision, you know, some, you know, gardening done there. And I would also envision down the road, perhaps it used for functions, as many of our neighboring towns have estates and so forth, that could be a revenue earner for the town. But it's like preliminary. The step one is, you know, really, do we want this property, which is an incredible gift by Mrs. Richardson? I neglected to say, Mrs. Richardson taught kindergarten for almost 40 years in Winchester. So, that's her affinity for children was to have a place for them to go, maybe to learn a little bit about farming, to learn a little bit about unnatural resources. And certainly, an ideal would be if there was use by the school system for, you know, preschool or whatever. But I think the possibilities are out there. I think it's a matter of taking a close look at the property. That's why I'm anxious for the members of the Board of Selectmen to walk the property and to see the buildings. This was an incredible gift, and although we know we have the historical easements, if this should go to another organization or another person, it does not necessarily mean there'll be public access to it.
Right. You know, I don't disagree with most of what you just said. I guess it's just my focus is on understanding what are those potential uses. When you throw out some of these ideas, they're the same things that I had going on in my head, but I don't know if they fit in with, you know, the historical easement. And I mean, I put the thing together years ago, but I just can't remember. You know, for example, you mentioned, you know, being a host site for functions. Is there the ability to create more parking? Is that the kind of location where you would want to use it for that purpose? Is it an appropriate location for the school department to run a particular program? So, I guess I'm, you know, speaking for myself, all too happy to go back to the property and take a look at the whole property again and refresh my memory and kind of get some of those ideas. But I think in terms of getting a handle on what the town ought to do, I think we need, through the manager's office, however you see fit to get input from various departments, who's got suggestions? What department says, "Hey, I could use that. I could use it for this, that, or the other thing." And that way, if the town makes the decision to carry that overhead, notwithstanding the fact that we've got the control right now through the easement, at least we're able to say, "This is the proposed use. This is, you know, this department, that department says that they can use it. Here's the cost that we expect to incur going forward. Now do you want to do it?" Town meeting, you know?
I think this evening is the beginning of that dialogue. Process.
Okay, I appreciate that. I wasn't sure. I wasn't sure how far the Historical Commission had kind of developed its ideas. So, how do we do that, Mike, with your department? You just meet with your department heads?
Yes, no, we had a department head meeting this morning, and I introduced this as a subject matter, and we can talk more with them. I've talked briefly with the superintendent of schools, and I'll talk more with her this week. It's a challenge. I mean, it's a wonderful gift, but when you look at operating costs, clearly, we'll have to, it will cost the town money to acquire it. Or to, yeah, to acquire it. It's going to cost the town money. The operating cost, based upon what we were provided for a six-month period from January to June of 2009, and this was information provided by Mr. Eckberg, the trustee, it was about $11,000. That did include $1,800 in real estate, so you'd bring that amount down to about $9,000 for that six-month period. And then for a six-month period from July to December of 2009, while the property was mostly vacant, it was about $7,000, which included $1,700 in property taxes. I know that they just done a capital expense for the roof at the barn, which I believe cost around $10,000. Someone can help me on that number?
Yeah.
I think it was around $10,000. So, clearly, the money that would be coming in, the interest from the principal, is not going to pay for the upkeep of the property. I think we all should understand that. I'm not suggesting that should stop us, but I think that should be part of our analysis. It would mean that, you know, Public Works will need to maintain the property, and public buildings will need to maintain the property also. So, it gets, you know, it gets to be a little more burdensome as we have less money but bring on more responsibilities. That said, I think we should continue to explore all of our options. And the question I would ask is, some of the things that Carolyn mentioned, you know, used by the Boy Scouts, the fact that we should preserve it as open space and all of that, that could still happen, I believe, whether or not we own it, depending upon any kind of a restriction. Would we have a right to make some, have some input or make some determination as to how it could be used? Could we, in fact, insist that there be a public component to its use?
You couldn't insist, but you could ask. The way this is structured is that the owner of the property has the right to hold those educational activities, but not the obligation. So, if the town were interested in having the Boy Scouts or the schools have a field trip to the site, they could ask. And I would assume that any owner, given the nature of the property, or, you know, with the understanding that they own the, when they took on the property, that that might be part of the arrangement, that they may be willing to do that. But it's not required.
If we acquired the property, could we then lease the property out for, not for individual activities, but lease the property out to an organization who would then take on the responsibility of maintaining the property and running and organizing events?
I think you could, as long as it's consistent with the historical nature of the property. I don't think there's a bar to that. If you're going to lease it long-term, you might need town meeting approval. The Selectmen, when I say long-term, it's now, the statute has just changed to 30 years, so you'd probably be okay with town meeting approval. But, yeah, there's some flexibility, and it depends on what the parties could agree to.
And what is the trust looking for from us? I know you spoke briefly about the January date. The town is not going to be, I don't mean to speak for the town, but I think everybody would agree, the town is not going to be able to make a determination in terms of an acquisition until town meeting. What happens between now and then?
Sorry. The trust is spending its own money right now, so it's looking for the town to take over the properties as soon as it can. It's clear to the trust that that can't happen until the earliest April after town meeting. But they're looking for the town to take over the property. I don't know that there are other suitable beneficiaries out there, really, people who are willing to take over the responsibility of the property. I haven't spoken with the trustee in some time. I've spoken with his attorney about finding, the legal process of finding a beneficiary, but I don't know where Mr. Eckberg stands in finding an actual beneficiary other than the town.
And I'd like to speak on behalf of Bob, because I've had many, many conversations with him in the past couple of months. I think what Bob is looking for is, and I don't perhaps want to use the word commitment, but a commitment from the Board of Selectmen, which is the town's governing body, that in fact, you are interested in acquiring this property for the people of Wilmington. If he does, at this point, he does not feel that that is the case. I think that's what he is looking for, that, you know, through the town manager or whatever, after you've seen the property and certainly discussed it and so forth, that you come to some agreement that you would support the acquisition or not. And I think that's really what he wants. At this point, I know he is looking for another caretaker of the property, because this gentleman's 80 years old. And in my last conversation, he said to me, "I'd like this settled before I die, Carolyn." So, I think that's what he wants. And anything can happen in town meeting, and he is really aware of that. But if he feels that the town, the Board of Selectmen is interested in pursuing the acquisition of this property, I think that's what he's looking for.
I don't want to speak on behalf of the whole board right now, tonight, but like you just said, a town meeting, if the town says no...
Anything can happen.
Excuse me. But if the trust does find another property owner, they would still be subject to preservation restrictions held by the town, correct?
Absolutely. We hold the historical easements on the property. You know, so no matter, you know, if they find a private individual or an organization to take it, certainly, what they do with the property has to meet the historical preservation guidelines.
Any other questions or comments from the board?
I'd just like to, as far as going to the property, I'm going to have to waive that, because I've been there. And, you know, I've been there many a times. I maintained part of what I do for work there through the three sisters until when they just passed away. But I will say that they've always kept that property really up as far as maintenance, as far as the...
as far as the grounds, when they were really out there, that was their destiny. They liked their yard and kept all the barns and everything intact. I will say that also. And so therefore, as far as the property itself, I'll waive my part, but I know it, and I have no problem, as long as, you know, we can find the group to accept it, I mean, I'd be in support of it. And I'm sure if we put the work as a group together, I'm sure we can find people that will take it, not only through the Scouts, I'm sure. The Garden Club would be a great start for them to take that property. As far as years, I know that they had flowers and shrubbery, and I can remember it, that they had gardeners, they had taken care of that. So I'm sure that the Garden Club would take an active interest in it. I'm sure the Art Club might even take parts of interest and maybe, I don't know how the Art Club performs, but as far as having, you know, drawings and artwork that they could sell off to put towards a yearly, a top of the cost, along with, I'm sure the Scouts can go out and get donations, and the Girl Scouts can kick in as far as that club. I'm sure there's a lot of effort to go in there to maintain that property, to keep it. So, I mean, as long as that all worked out, and the town manager can put it together with department heads as far as what we could use it for, I'd be in support of it.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'd just like to say, I'd like to have an opportunity to visit the property. I have never had an opportunity. I'm very familiar with it. I drive by it every day onto work. I do agree with Salkman Newhouse and Mr., and the town manager. I know we need to take a look at it. We need to look at all our options. I think it's a great gesture, but I think simply put, we're just going to make sure that it's feasible to the community for us to take it over and to make sure that, you know, it's done right in a right way. I don't think we're going to be making a big profit on it. I think if anything, it's going to cost the town some money to actually take this venture. But I'd like to keep all the options on the table and just listen to the folks and just take it from there. But once again, I'd like to take a look at it and discover it. Thank you.
I would also like to say that, when it came to the Historical Commission, she may well have gone to any of the other commissions in town, Conservation or anyone else, but because of the historical nature of her house, she came to the commission. So that's why the commission is here presenting this to you. We certainly hope that the town of Wilmington will be able to utilize this property to its utmost. You know, it's very rare that you get an opportunity that somebody is willing to give you 5.7 acres of land and all of these historic buildings. And as Mr. Lepore indicated, it is pretty much in mint condition. They, the Richardson really kept up their property. And I'm not saying that down the road, they wouldn't need a new oil burner or whatever, but, you know, those are the things that happen. So I appreciate you taking the time and considering this, and I'm going to ask that, you know, maybe you speak to the town manager as to when you want to have access to the building. If you could give me at least one or two dates, and I can make those arrangements to have the buildings open for you.
Do that?
Yeah, sure.
Let me know, and then we'll, to the point initially raised by Salkman Newhouse, we'll try to come up with some options for use, understanding the limitations that are presented to us. I mean, I do agree with Carolyn that it's a wonderful gift, 5.7 acres of pristine property. Certainly, if we can find the appropriate use for it without having a soccer ball on the property, we'll do that.
Any questions or comments from the audience?
I'd like to have a question, this is Kathy Reynolds for the Historical Commission. Mike, you've mentioned contacting your department heads to have a meeting with them regarding how they could use it. Could you also reach out to some of the civic community organizations as well, or would you leave that for the Historical Commission to do?
I'd suggest the Historical Commission, either through Terry or Carolyn, would, should probably do that. I'll handle the municipal end and deal with the school committee, the school department, and maybe it's best that they talk to some of the civic organizations, see if they're interested. And there may be, there may be a group that would like to use that as a headquarters of some type, and I don't know if that would fall into the purview if a civic group or a service organization wanted to use it, whether that would meet the, you know, the constraints that you've indicated.
It probably would, and the town is the one who enforces the restriction.
Yeah.
You just encouraged the board to come see the property during the day to get a real flavor of the property. I think you'd be completely impressed. It's absolutely beautiful. And if you haven't seen it yet, it's really, really worth a visit.
Very good, thank you. Steve?
Mr. Chairman, two questions I have basically. Is now that the January deadline's been set in place, and we generally have town meeting the first Saturday of May, would that hinder the deadline towards what the trust, the head of trust wants to do with the property?
I think we went through that. They said that they want to extend the deadline a bit.
The other question, more from the town manager, would be, could there possibly be a trust set up through both the Historical Commission and the town that we can have, like an example, donations by, even the townspeople to donate into a trust for some matter of repairs or whatever? You know, if we have a civic organization...
Yeah, we can accept donations earmarked for historical purposes. We've done that for the Buddis Farm, for example. We've done that for the Town Pound, so that can always happen.
It should always be a good thing, reach out to the townspeople, because that'd be a great, it seems like a great place.
Thank you, Carolyn.
Just a point of clarification, is town meeting really April 16th and not the first Saturday in May?
No, it's actually the, the first Saturday after the fourth Saturday. So sometimes it's the fifth Saturday, and sometimes it's the first Saturday in May.
Seven?
Well, no, it probably would be then April 30th, because that would be the fifth Saturday.
Of April.
Of April.
Yeah, April 30th.
Of 2011.
Yes.
Yes. So it's actually in April, April 30th.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you very much for your time, Tom. Thank you.
Appreciate it.
Thank you, Lou. If we could have communications, please.
Mr. Chairman, you have the supplemental letter from the Attorney General's Office that was sent to the town clerk regarding the approval of the general zoning and general bylaws voted. This is supplemental because you will recall when we reviewed this at the last, at the meeting that occurred, they had not included Article 23 in its decision. And Article 23, in fact, it was just an unfortunate omission, but in fact, it was approved by the Attorney General's Office. That was a zoning bylaw regarding signs and advertising devices. That's sort of a housekeeping article. You do have correspondence from Massachusetts Municipal Association in the form of a legislative alert regarding the sales tax ballot measure. As you know, there is an initiative petition, question number three, on the November 2nd ballot, which would reduce the sales tax rate from 6.25% to 3%. And it is believed, based on the review of the Mass Municipal Association, that municipal and school aid could face more than $600 million in new budget cuts in fiscal year 2012. So they did a simulation of the possible impact of question three that was conducted by the State Budget Office, and the State Budget Office projected that Chapter 70 Education Aid would be cut by $464 million, and that the unrestricted general government aid would be cut by $103 million. And then other key accounts, including regional school transportation, library aid, et cetera, would also be cut by tens of millions of dollars more. They provided this simulation using rather simple assumptions about how state policymakers might allocate the loss of the $2.5 billion, which they project would be the loss in state tax revenue next year. These numbers that they provided, they don't reflect any knowledge of what the legislature or the governor might do, but it was just an effort to put this into perspective. They also note that there is right now a budget gap going into fiscal 2012 of at least $2 billion, which does not consider the sales tax reduction. They believe that local aid cuts caused by question three would then come on top of more than $800 million in cuts that have already been made by the governor and the legislature since the recession first hit in 2008. When you look at the information, you will see that the town of Wilmington would be projected to lose $1,422,000 in local aid in fiscal year 2012.
I'm sorry, you said 142,000?
1,422,000, yeah.
Sure that's not Wilmington?
No, no, Wilmington would go from, would lose $1,182,000 in, through the simulated cuts in school aid.
Right.
And then an additional $239,000 in cuts to unrestricted government aid. So that would total $1,422,000, $1.4 million. Chairman St. Maglia asked that I generate a memorandum updating the status of the appeal filed by the Ifred D'Enzo Trust with the Massachusetts Appeals Court regarding the appellate tax board's decision that the town properly assessed the D'Enzo property on Industrial Way. As previously reported, the town received a favorable decision in November of 2007 from the appellate tax board relative to the D'Enzo Trust appeal of the town's assessed value for property which they own located at 65 and 80 Industrial Way. The appellant claimed entitlement to an abatement of taxes because the property was, quote, "contaminated," and therefore, in their opinion, had little or no value. The appellate tax board rejected that argument and affirmed the Board of Assessors' valuation of the property for the years in question, which was 2004, 5, and 6. Prior to the decision, the town had rejected a final settlement offer from the trust, the acceptance of which would have cost the town $500,000, as well as set the stage for lowering the value of the property in subsequent years. So as you recall, this was a very important case and a very significant victory by the town. On December 7th of 2007, attorneys for the trust requested that the appellate tax board issue a findings of fact and rulings of law regarding the decision rendered on both properties. Essentially, they were asking the appellate tax board to tell them specifically why they ruled the way they did. The appellate tax board did not issue that findings of fact and report until April 8th of 2009. Subsequent to that finding, the D'Enzo Trust appealed the board's decision to the Massachusetts Appeals Court. Attorneys for both the town and the D'Enzo Trust argued the case before a three-judge panel at the Massachusetts Court of Appeals on April 15th, 2010, after having submitted briefs on the case in December of 2009. I am pleased to advise you that on October 1st of this year, the Commonwealth of Massachusetts Appeals Court affirmed the decision of the appellate tax board, thereby sustaining the Board of Assessors' valuation of both properties. This is a significant victory for the town, due in large measure to those individuals who worked hard to defend what we always believed was a baseless challenge to the values established by the Board of Assessors. These individuals included town council John Foskett, who argued the town's position at the appeals court, attorney Richard Huxham, who successfully handled the case through the appellate tax board hearing stage, and Skip Moynihan, principal assessor, who along with the town's appraisal and environmental consultants, James Johnston and Michael Webster, provided the necessary support, which ultimately led to the town's success. I would note that the D'Enzo Trust has 20 days from the date of the appeals court decision to file an appeal with the Massachusetts Supreme Court. And that clock started ticking on October 1st, but we, just as we have throughout this entire process, we still feel confident that the town will prevail. Mr. Chairman, the board has a letter from the State Lottery Commission, specifically Mark Kavanaugh, the executive director, regarding a keynote-to-go offering to Sonny's Mobile on the Run at 316 Lowell Street. They offer this keynote-to-go to certain agents in the community who obviously already have lottery at their establishment, and they notify us when, in accordance with Mass general law, whenever there is an opportunity for one of those agents to participate in the keynote-to-go gain. If the board objects, they must do so in writing within 21 days of receipt of this letter. I don't know if the board has a position?
Any objections? I think we did this before these last meetings, correct?
Right. There's no opposition from the...
Police.
Police Department. So we'll take no action. Okay. I wanted to remind the board that there will be a public information meeting on the Olin Superfund site. It is not until November 15th, but just in the event that people are interested. We did announce this at the last meeting because we had just gotten the date at that time, but I did want to advise folks that this meeting would be held in conjunction with the Environmental Protection Agency and the Massachusetts Department of Environmental Protection. The public information meeting will be to specifically discuss the ongoing remedial investigation of the Olin Superfund site on Eames Street. Representatives from the town and both agencies will be present at the meeting, along with representatives from the Olin Corporation. We'll have representatives there from town council's office, as well as from our consultants' Geo Insight. And the meeting, again, will be at the Middle School Auditorium on Cairo Lane, November 15th at 7:00 PM, and all are welcome to attend. We will continue to publicize that, Mr. Chairman. We have a copy of a letter that was sent to Pamela McKenzie, the collector from the Insurance and Financial Services Division of the Attorney General's Office, advising us that the Attorney General recently recovered $2.65 million from CVS Pharmacy after an investigation revealed the company was overcharging public entities of various prescription drugs under the workers' compensation insurance system. And they were required, as a result of that, to make payments to approximately 200 cities and towns in Massachusetts, and we're receiving a payment in the amount of $2,817.57 as the town of Wilmington shares. You also have a letter from Joan Butler, the executive director of Minuteman Senior Services, regarding the fiscal year 2010 services report. Wanted to make the board aware of that, as we do every year, as to the services that are being provided, in this case, to over 1,300 seniors and their caregivers in Wilmington, at a total value of $780,000. That's the value that Minuteman Senior Services believes that the town of Wilmington is receiving from our assessment. The assessment for fiscal year 11 is only $3,351, and we receive various programmatic services, including services relative to nursing homes and long-term care and money management assistance, the Senior Citizens Law Project, various caregiver support programs, Meals on Wheels, et cetera. Finally, we have correspondence from Jane Labossiere at Verizon regarding a channel lineup change on the FiOS that on or after November 11th, there will be changes impacting the FiOS TV lineup. Discovery Health will be removed from the Prime HD package. All of the subscribers will receive that notification. Mr. Chairman, the board is being asked to consider signing a proclamation to declare October 24th, 2010 as United Nations Day. You have a copy of that proclamation. Essentially, the proclamation addresses issues from poverty and access to education to improving Essentially, the proclamation addresses issues from poverty and access to education to improving health care and environmental sustainability, and that is what they are asking you to focus on this year, in cooperation with the Engaging America in the Millennium Development Goals as a theme for the 2010 United Nations Day. If the board wants me to read the entire proclamation to record, I'd be happy to, but it is as stated before you.
Before, yeah, if it's up to the board, that's fine with me. This is the same United Nations Association, excuse me, Association of Greater Boston last year, that gave us the proclamation that says, "Whereas the United States has yet to live up to many of its trade guarantees, excuse me, provide substantially less foreign aid as a percentage of gross national income than its Western European peers, and must act swiftly to perpetuate the international commitment to debt relief." And then it goes on. I realize it is different this year, the sample proclamation, but I just wanted to remind the board members last year that we did, we took no action on this proclamation. If a board member would like them to read the, this year's proclamation into record, that's fine with me. Or would you like to make a motion or have any other comments?
No, I mean, I remember what you're talking about last year, and we discussed it, and if you're writing this group off, fine with me, I'll write them off with you.
I have no issue with that. I was waiting for this to come up again, unfortunately. I mean, I think this is the greatest country in the world, and for us to stand by and listen to that, see you later, so I don't think so. You know?
We don't need a motion, we didn't...
No. We'll get back to it.
If you want to, I'll just put it in the file.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman, that concludes the regular business before the board.
Thank you. Any public comments? Hearing none. Do business committee report?
Good, thank you.
Mike? I'll say. I'll say. I just want to mention quickly, WCTV was along with us this past weekend, Friday, Saturday, Sunday. We had a group of veterans that went down to Washington and were able to visit all their war memorials, and I was amazed by the reaction of a lot of the World War II veterans that were with us when we did go to the World War II memorial, and our memories, I'm sure we're all sharing, and WCTV, like I said, was there filming, and Don and Ron were aboard with us, and I'm sure they're gonna come up with some wonderful footage from that weekend, so we should be looking out for that. Important dates?
Yes, the, remind folks, the last day to register to vote for the state election, if you are not already registered, is tomorrow evening, that's October 13th. The town clerk's office will be open until 8:00 PM tomorrow. It'll also be processing passports for anybody who's interested until 7:30 PM, so that's tomorrow, the 13th, until 8:00 PM to register to vote. We do have brush drop-off at Old Main Street, 8:00 AM to 2:00 PM on October 13th, and on October 20th, and then also on October 16th and 23rd, which is a Saturday, from 9:00 AM to 4:00 PM. So either of those two dates, four dates, are available for you to drop off your brush at the recycling site off of Old Main Street. I want to remind folks about the recreation basketball registration deadline. There are about 1,000 kids that participate in the Wilmington Recreation Basketball League, and if you want your youngster to participate, this is for grades three through 10, both boys and girls. The deadline is October 14th, and you can register through the recreation office here at Town Hall. On October 24th, the Horribles Parade will, once again, I think it's about the 45th year, I'm not sure exactly, but it's, I think, over 40.
Thirty-third or forty-third.
Something like that. But they've been marching for quite a while, let's put it that way. And the selectmen are invited to attend and participate if they'd like, but this is for all residents of the town of Wilmington. You are invited to assemble at Rotary Park at 4:30 PM on Sunday, October 24th, with your youngsters in costume, and they'll be escorted down Church Street to the high school cafeteria, where there will be goodies awaiting them. The board next meets on October 25th. And just one other mention, because this is the 100th anniversary of the Saracota Lecture Fund Committee. The fund, which has been sponsoring various programs now for 100 years as a result of a bequest from a former Wilmington resident, Saracota, will be having their 100th anniversary concert on October 28th. It is the Ancient Mariners Dixieland Band, and that will be at the middle school auditorium at 7:00 PM. This is a free event, there's information about it available in Town Topics, and also here at Town Hall, and I know they've been publicizing this event through the local newspapers, but it's a wonderful event, and it's an opportunity to enjoy yourself and have the family enjoy themselves at no cost on October 28th. That concludes the important dates, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Motion adjourned?
So will. Second?
Motion made second, all in favor?
Right.
Thank you.